Estamos pedindo que la gente termine su conversación ahora y que los candidatos asistan. Y los participantes se van a presentar. Así que, denle un aplauso.
Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos al Forum de Candidatos del Distrito 2 del Alcoyri City Council. Antes de empezar, quiero hacer unas advertencias y agradecimientos. Queremos reconocer que históricamente Tijuana es aquí, en este edificio en particular. También queremos agradecer a la Sociedad Alcoyri por permitirnos tener este evento en su hermosa instalación. También queremos agradecer a los responsables de organizar este foro, incluyendo a Bob Kamak. Sí, está en la parte de atrás. Bob Kamak en la parte de atrás, Doreen McKnight, está por ahí. Terry Storch, que es nuestro guardián de tiempo. Drew DiGiobani, está por ahí. Jared Ames, está por ahí. Susan Kelly, Sharon Levin, y Christine Sierra, que nos hablarán en un minuto. Finalmente, me gustaría tomar un momento para reconocer algunas personas en la audiencia, personas electas y/o miembros del Partido Demócrata. Marisol Enriquez está aquí. Ella es la legisladora del distrito de Arribanca, del condado de Arribanca. Tenemos a John Kelly, que actualmente trabaja en el Consejo Distrital de Conservancia del Medio Río Grande. Y está en el balón de nuevo este mes, aunque está jugando en una cajada, todavía necesita al menos uno voto. Si están en este distrito, asegúrense de votarlo. Y Florenta Lenceno, que es diputada del Partido Demócrata del condado de Arribanca. Y Ray Allen Smith, que es el tesoro del Partido Demócrata de México. ¿Hay otros funcionarios electos y/o funcionarios del partido hoy? No? Bien, bien. Realmente, quiero señalar que si alguien necesita el baño, va por las puertas dobles y luego a la izquierda. Down the hallway, y la última puerta a la izquierda es el restorante. Hay hojas de inscripción aquí, si no tuvieron la oportunidad de inscribirse en el camino de entrada, pueden inscribirse en el camino de salida o durante la pausa, que vendrá un poco más tarde. También hay una caja de donaciones aquí, así que si quieren ayudar a reducir los costos de organizar eventos como este, pueden dejar un par de dólares, estaría muy agradecido. Y por favor, recuerden apagar o silenciar sus teléfonos para evitar la destrucción durante el foro. Ahora, vamos a ello. Nuestro viejo candidato de la ciudad, Ike Benton, ha decidido retirarse de la política de la ciudad. Hoy vamos a escuchar a los tres candidatos que están dispuestos a asistir al consejo de la ciudad. La primera parte del foro será un periodo moderativo de Q and A, en el que cada candidato tendrá la oportunidad de responder a las preguntas que han sido preparadas antes. A unos tres minutos nos tomaremos una breve pausa, y luego los candidatos tendrán la oportunidad de responder a las preguntas del público. Hay tarjetas de index en la mesa de inscripción. Si tienen la oportunidad, pueden escribir su pregunta en una de las tarjetas. Y también hay una pequeña caja para recolectar tarjetas, o pueden darlas a mí o a Terry Storch. Vamos a ir por todas, llegaremos a lo máximo que podamos, intentaremos organizarlos para evitar la redundancia o hacer la misma pregunta varias veces en una fila. Los candidatos de hoy son Joaquín Baca, Moises González, y Renan Durán Humber. No tendrán la oportunidad de presentarse en más detalle mientras se unan. Y nuestro moderador de hoy es Dr. Christine Sierra, doctora. Trabajó en el Departamento de Ciencias Unidas por 28 años. Todavía es activa en la política demócrata local, trabajando como presidenta de su primer cargo, 191, y como tesoro de la primera posición del Distrito 15. También trabaja en el Consejo de Regresión para la Dra. Leo Kim, y está encantada de ser moderadora de nuestro foro de candidatos hoy. Y con eso, voy a pasar las cosas a Christine.
Buenas tardes. Es tan bueno verte a todos aquí, para este importante foro, donde debería ayudarnos a elegir al siguiente candidato de la ciudad del Distrito 2. El formato de hoy es tener a cada candidato presentado por sí mismo, y luego seguido de rondas de cinco preguntas, que deben responder en una hora y media cada una. Después, pondré dos preguntas llamadas preguntas de lightning, que requieren respuestas rápidas, sí o no, o solo unas palabras. Nuestro guardián de tiempo es Terry Storch, que fue la ex-diputada del Distrito 11B. Le prometo mantenernos todos en línea y con un horario estricto. Así que, sin más preámbulos, quiero mencionar que llamaré a los candidatos a comenzar alfabéticamente por sus nombres últimos. Pero luego giraremos el orden de las respuestas de candidatos, solo para asegurarse de que todos vayan primero, segundo, y tercero. Así que, vamos a empezar preguntando a cada candidato a presentarse y, por favor, decir por qué están corriendo para el consejo de la ciudad.
Gracias. Quiero comenzar agradeciendo a los distritos y a todos los voluntarios que ayudaron a organizar esto. Muchas gracias a mis colegas aquí en mi laboratorio, y a todos los que vinieron hoy. Esto es mucho trabajo, y aprecio su tiempo. Como saben, mi nombre es Joaquín Baca, y estoy dispuesto a ser defensor de nuestras familias y comunidades. Soy hidrológico, soy padre, soy veterano, y soy un viejo residente de la ciudad. Y para aquellos de ustedes que viven en el valle, he sido uno de los representantes del Consejo de la Ciudad del Medio Río Grande desde 2017. Somos la entidad que mantiene el río, la bosque, la irrigación, los dientes, etc., todo lo que amamos. Y estoy seguro de sus creencias de que necesitamos hacer más aquí en Alcoyri, para hacer una ciudad más equitativa, segura y sostenible. Y así, creo... And so I believe in hope, and I believe in the possible, and I believe that we can do things simultaneously. We can work to reduce crime and homelessness, and we can invest in the quality of life for our families. We can do, like most other folks, like everybody here, I sometimes feel frustrated at the pace of progress, and sometimes it's hard to feel any kind of change, and so we need to work towards that. We need to work towards accelerating that change, towards making it so that we feel that change when you're out there taking your kids to school and they're like, "We're there."
Thank you, thank you, Joaquin. Mr. Gonzalez, please.
Good afternoon. I'm the only US-born child of Cuban immigrants. Like many immigrants, my parents sincerely believed that this was the land of opportunity with liberty and justice for all. No podemos esperar. We can't wait. That is the theme I chose for my campaign. Unfortunately, too often, we nibble at the edges of our problems rather than confronting them head-on. Three of those issues are public safety, transportation, and housing. When talking about public safety, my question is always, "Safety for whom?" We've all had to deal with crime in Albuquerque. Recently, I caught someone stealing my catalytic converter. Thanks to my dog, Earl, I was able to run them off. But the people most impacted by crime are those in the poorest parts of our city, and the unhoused live in constant fear of being robbed, assaulted, raped, or even killed. No podemos esperar. As for transportation, I often hear that Albuquerque will always be a car city. We can't change that attitude or the design of our city overnight. But if you believe as I do that our actions are causing climate change, then we have no alternative but to change our behaviours. We must all find opportunities to use public transportation, to try to walk and ride our bicycles, to find ways to mitigate this problem. No podemos esperar. Finally, it's time we stop talking about homelessness as their problem, it's our problem. Rental housing prices are going up at a rate faster than inflation or wages. We should be ashamed that we have allowed this to happen. Housing is a human right, not a luxury. We need a Housing First policy to get people into permanent affordable housing. In Houston, Housing First has cut the unhoused population by more than 50%. No podemos esperar. We can't wait.
Thank you. Ms. Narraza Lopez.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Garetta Narraza Lopez, and I'm ready for a city council for District Two. I'm very passionate about my community. I'm a native Albuquerquean, and I love New Mexico. I love our District Two, and I love our... And because of that, I have been working since 1990 in our community, volunteering on the Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership to bring affordable housing to people that were 80% of the median income and people that were under that 80% of the median income with apartments and single-family dwellings. I've also been recently involved with the Historic Neighborhood Alliance to provide funding for people that made their homes rehabilitated. I have been involved in making sure that we get a community center. We've been fighting for that issue since 1990. We broke ground just recently, and we are opening up in a few months a open space community garden. I have direct experience working in the planning department. I worked with the city council on land use issues, with Don Peterson on resolutions and ordinance, so I would appreciate your support and vote. Early voting starts October 10th, and voting day is November 7th. So I appreciate this time talking to you.
The first question, and I would ask Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. Narraza Lopez, and Joaquin Baca to respond in that order. Does the city have a role in generating affordable housing? If so, how does it do that? If it does not have a role, why not? Each of you have a minute and a half.
Can we just wait, have a second?
Mr. Gonzalez, why don't you take it away?
So definitely, I believe that the city has a role in affordable housing. As I said in my introduction, the only policy that I've seen that has had a major impact across the country on homelessness is Housing First. Several cities have done this successfully. As I mentioned in my introduction, Houston is one of the most successful examples, although there's also Salt Lake City and Columbus, Ohio, and a few others. In order for that to happen, there has to be political will. There has to be a will of the people, I would say, first of all. One of the things that made it possible in Houston was getting different organizations that had been working in a very similar fashion that we've been working here on a continuum of care, providing services to people who are on the street, but getting them all to pull for that idea that all of those issues can be better dealt with if people are in permanent and affordable housing first. You know, although there are many different pulls on the coffers of the state, I know, especially when the coffers are full, I think that we need to leverage those monies, and we need to build affordable, permanent, and decent housing for people that are situated along transportation lines, so that we can also help pull people out of poverty by not having to try to maintain a car, which on average is considered to be $9,000 to $10,000 a year. Thank you.
Ms. Narraza Lopez.
I've been working on affordable housing, as I stated before. Sorry. I've been working on affordable housing, as I stated, since I was on the Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership, but also I was up with the pocket of poverty. And we provided for seniors' housing rehabilitation, and currently, we just have the funding that's been selected now to go out and help seniors rehabilitate their homes. We need to just be more... The city of Albuquerque needs to be more aggressive in providing subsidies for first-time homebuyers. They need to, like I said, rehabilitate their homes and use, like Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership or other nonprofits and the developers to work with them in making sure that we build this affordable housing that's needed. So I recommend that we deal with that immediately, because we have been dealing with affordable housing, but we need to be more aggressive now.
Thank you. Mr. Baca.
Thank you. Yes, the city has a role in playing in this. We need to create more housing while simultaneously protecting our historic neighborhoods. We can do that several ways. One, annually updating our IDO in ways that will support creating housing, and also make sure that everybody's at the table throughout our historic districts, people of color, other disenfranchised folks. Two, we need to do infill. We need to promote that. In some areas along our major corridors that have good transit, that should be more dense, higher infill. And we can have gentle infill in some of our smaller neighborhoods, some of our historic areas, something that fits within the context of those neighborhoods. We really want to protect that. The other thing, we need to do more private partner, private-public partnerships to develop mixed-income housing. We need to take care of everybody across the board so that we have what I call healthy communities, you know, folks who are just students or don't need a big space. We can do stuff with the city's doing, buy more hotels, convert to housing for folks that, you know, don't need a whole lot. There's something like 25 hotels right now that can be purchased and turned over here in our district. I think we've done three so far. Sorry. So there's quite a bit that we can do along these lines for our housing.
Thank you. The second question. The Albuquerque Police Department is still under a federal consent decree for excessive use of force. So far in 2023, there have been eight officer-involved shootings with five months to go in the year. Public safety remains a concern for residents. Do you think the city can eliminate excessive...
So those are the things that I would like to see happen in the city of Albuquerque, but it's not something new that I haven't been addressing already with the city since 2000. We did get the rail runner, but the rail runner needs to provide higher speed, and so we need to work on the rail runner with the speed. I think that's pretty much what I would recommend. But it needs to be a drastic change on both situations, where we're looking at an alternative to trauma prevention, but a public process to educate people.
And Joaquin Baca.
So everybody knows right now we have one of the hottest two eyes, and we're not having ours on soon. Last year, the river dried. This year, the river's likely going to dry again. As we drove over here, for most of us, you saw a lot of the housing and homelessness, people experiencing homelessness issues going on. And really, we can... Ultimately, the biggest initiative that will actually solve a lot of this or address a lot of this is housing, ultimately. If you care about your river, the most efficient way to use water is not sprawl, it's infill, right? Whether it's water or energy, it's infill. If we have more housing, we're going to be able to deal with the homelessness issue. If we're converting buildings downtown into housing, we're not only helping the energy use and the water use. A lot of folks don't understand that the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District is funded primarily through property taxes. Well, that... If we're developing downtown in all these empty spaces or some of this gentle infill, we're helping our Rio, we're helping our Bosque, we're tackling these climate change issues. If we convert city buildings for housing, and we take out all the fossil fuel lines and the gas, and we convert to electric only, we're taking care of housing, we're being more efficient with our resources, we're tackling climate change. Housing is at the root of a lot of issues, but it's also the solution to a lot of these issues, so...
And question number five. You will have only one vote on city council. How will you go about influencing others to vote with you on a particular proposal or resolution? Why do you think you will be effective in influencing others? Garetta, please start.
Well, my training through the Industrial Areas Foundation is to meet with people and research, do the research on everything that I'm going to be proposing, and make sure I have the information, and reach out to the councillors, which I already have been meeting with them individually, asking them questions about how they look at their job, how, you know, how they view everything at their job. And so I would say the first thing is meeting with them and communicating, but mainly, whatever I'm proposing, I will research and have all the information and the answers for them, so if they have any questions, in making sure that they know what I'm proposing, why I'm proposing it, and asking for their support.
Joaquin.
So one of my roles is as a trained mediator. I've gone through the training, volunteered in the courts, district court. Rule number one, you have to listen, you have to be able to hear somebody else's, what their issue is from their perspective, how they view it. You have to pull yourself out of that. And so with any issue across our city with the other councillors, you have to sit down and listen to what their issue is also. How do they perceive what I'm trying to figure out so that we can reach some common ground? I have the history of collaborating, you know, in the water world, the whole idea of whiskeys for drinking waters for fighting, that's a myth. The reality is, we always come to some sort of agreement when it comes to water, so we always have to work together. And that's my perspective, you know, reaching out to the councillors, who I've spoken to before over the years through my role as a board director at MRGCD, and working with others, whether it's through my association, working with the community. It's always about sitting down, listening, hearing what other folks have to say, presenting what I feel is important, how I want to work through it, and coming to a consensus.
And Moises, please.
I agree completely with what Joaquin said. The most important thing that you can do is listen. Too often, when I've been at city council meetings, agendas are pushed at the expense of others, even before the first words are spoken. So I think that we all need to listen a little bit better. The second thing that I would say is that I can influence policy by being well-informed. I think that knowing the ins and outs of issues, studying issues very carefully. If there's one thing that I learned from being on the Environmental Planning Commission, where we were given huge packets of information for cases that were going to come before the commission, it was the importance of being well-versed in what the issues were before I walked into that chamber. So I think that that's very important as well. And finally, I would say believing in, you know, holding my beliefs passionately. So while we need to listen, at the end of the day, we need to stand up for what's right, we need to stand up for what we believe, and we need to explain it passionately, but at the same time respectfully to the people who have different opinions than ours.
We will now shift gears just a little bit, and I will pose what we're calling two lightning questions, meaning these are rapid responses.
Do we get extra points?
And I would like to go in alphabetical order of Mr. Baca, Mr. Gonzalez, and then Ms. Narraza Lopez. Are we ready? We can pretend this is a game show. A yes or no, please. Do you support or oppose increasing multifamily housing units in Albuquerque?
Yes. Support, yes.
Yes.
And finally, name your top three priorities if you become a city councillor. Mr. Baca? No.
Yes!
Or a few words. It's not a yes or no, it's a few words.
One, reduce crime and homelessness. Two...
Not my crime.
One, reduce crime and homelessness. Two, create housing while protecting our historic neighborhood. And three, tackle climate change head-on.
Public safety, transportation, and housing, homelessness.
And reaching out to the community, the priorities are affordable housing, public safety, and dealing with the homelessness.
Very good. Thank you all for your very cogent responses. At this point, we will take a break, and a few minutes, and then Jeff will reconvene us. What we're going to ask is for you all to be prompt and return, and then we will have questions from the audience, from you all. And if you will jot those down in those cards, and we'll let the candidates stretch, and let's give a round of applause for Garetta.
All right, everybody, we're going to get started again. Please end the side conversations, we're going to get started again. What I'm going to do, I'm going to go through as many of the audience's questions as we have time to get to, and just like before, the candidates will have a minute and a half, unless I specifically call one out as a short-answer question. So, we'll go ahead and get started with those, and then with a few minutes left and the time that we have today, we'll take a break for then to make a closing statement, and let that get going. Okay. All right, so, can we end the side conversations, please? Okay. There's been a lot of talk about sustainable, affordable housing, but there were several questions about getting into more specifics, about what you very specifically would support to address the deeper affordable housing issue. Let's start with Moretta.
Like, right now, we're providing for seniors to rehabilitate their home, and then for people that are needing housing, we just finished, well, we collaborated with the government, it's the Albuquerque Housing Authority, to build 54 units in our neighborhood. I want to say very proudly that we were there in support of that, for that project, and they announced at the celebration that we were the only neighborhood that accepted the 54 housing units there. They took down the original housing and provided duplexes, townhomes, and single-family, well, townhomes and duplexes for these residents. And because of that, we received, instead of three people going in the school bus, 17 new students at Longfellow. So, we were very excited because we let them know that they're investing in our community and we appreciate them being there. And so, part of it is, after we put, the community has put millions of dollars into the institutions in our neighborhoods like Albuquerque High and Longfellow, we need the students to attend, and this is the way we can provide affordable housing, that we accept these people in our neighborhoods that have families.
Okay, Moises?
I think Mike Pence flies. I have, you know, I'm going to say it again, housing first. The only way that we're really going to take a big bite of, and it's not going to solve the problem overnight, it's very, I know that it's a contentious issue for a lot of people. Some people think that, you know, you can't just put people in housing, that there has to, of course, in those cities where they attempted this, in Houston, or in Salt Lake, or in Columbus, that they, you, the idea of housing first isn't that you put somebody in an apartment and walk away. I mean, these services, this continuum of care that's going on right now, these different agencies that have been supporting people who are living on the streets and trying to find ways to get them off of the street, they don't disappear just because the city starts to build large numbers of affordable permanent housing. I have a lot across the street from my house, I live over on Walter, that has stood empty for 17 years, and it's just a dirt lot, and it's right by the ART, the Edo ART station. I think that we need to use a carrot-and-stick approach. We need to give builders incentives, whether it be through tax breaks or even through land, and streamline processes, which is something they always consider, that they always like. And we need to get the housing built at home.
So, I think I'm with Moises, and probably everybody in this room, housing first, for sure. There's no question there. We also need to expand the definition of what is affordable housing, what is mixed-income housing. I recently purchased a home, and I had a very hard time actually finding a home within my neighborhood to live in with my kids. I used to be neighbors with Moises. I can't afford to live next to Moises anymore. Another part of it is, you know, as we develop these old public-private partnerships, you know, I spent last year on the Albuquerque Development Commission, providing tax abatement, providing incentives, helping with some of that streamlining of the permitting process that needs to happen. You know, nobody has built houses for free, other than Habitat for Humanity, so we have to have those public-private partnerships. And then the other part, we have to be okay with some infill, some level of infill. I mean, as part of the development commission, consistently, every single project that came before us, it was being fought by one group, or a group. I mean, there's always somebody that had some issue, and that slowed down the process tremendously. Even if you get through the whole thing, it just took forever to get through all of that. And so, we have to be okay with, you know, some neighborhoods, it's going to be that gentleman, we'll put some areas along Central, we can actually be a little bit more aggressive with that.
Okay, next question. Do you support city-county consolidation, why or why not? Moises?
You know, I, is this working at all?
No.
Okay. So, you know, I've talked about this issue, actually, with Ike Benton in the past. There's a real question here about whether this would be a good idea. There are a lot of duplicating services that, you know, that, I'll give you an example, I found a dog over, I was going down to Soy Lucian's not too long ago, and there was a dog on the road, and there's Burn Leo County Shelter right down there. I took the dog over there, and they wouldn't take the dog because they determined that the street that I was on was actually a city street, not a county street. So, whether it means an actual consolidation... So, whether it means an actual consolidation, a complete consolidation, if it's not going to be consolidation, then there has to be a much greater level of cooperation. But I do think that it's something to be studied, and the possibility of saving citizens' money on, on public services that are duplicated by those two entities.
So, yes, in a lot of ways, this makes sense. Currently, the water authority is a joint partnership between the city and the county. We can do that with a lot of, with a lot of services, housing being one of them, it's being proposed with the city council right now. One of our councillors is against that, but that shared resource, that takes away the stupid, uh, services, that makes things more efficient, I mean, you can do that. You know, that's what may ever help, that's one of the big issues dealing with, you know, folks experiencing homelessness, or houselessness. And, you know, the vast majority of funding goes through the county. So if we're gonna work through to solve these issues, we need to work with the county on these things. And it just makes sense to, to consolidate some of these things. That's not to say that we need to do all of it, and that, that's something that should be studied, that's something that we should think about. But a lot of the issues we deal with right now can be better addressed with a closer partnership with the county. And it's good to see that that's actually starting to happen with some of the new county commissioners out there.
From my experience working with the city planning department, we used to do the county zoning, and so that was one time, work, we worked together with the county, and it seemed to work okay, but the issue that, the reason why we have the water authority is because people did not want to come into the city. They want their rural life, and they don't wanna be forced to have to get water in the sewer and, and be in the city limits when they wanna keep their rural life. So we have to go to the public and ask them what they want, and then decide from there. But I know they're looking at consolid, maybe working together with the police and the sheriff's department, that has been recommended. I think that's a good idea. And then I know the trash issue is a, a problem too, because we have one house on Solero that's county, and the next house is the city. So I think maybe we need to get collaborating with that and combining it, but it still needs to go to the public.
Next question is, are you in favor of implementing rent control, why or why not? Start with Buckings. I think that's a question worth looking into. Legislation was introduced last year to actually do that at the state level, because it's a state, doesn't allow you to actually do that at the city, at the municipal level. And so I think that's a question worth having. But I also think, you know, we should take a step back and talk about, well, why are rents out of control these days? Part of that is there's a lack of housing, part of that is a lack of work and rising. There's different reasons, right? Again, going back to what would be the biggest initiative, housing can help solve a lot of the issues that we have for housing. There are some common sense things that can be done in the meantime. Talked to Councilor Tewelcorn last year, introduced a measure to kinda, you know, help out landlords in terms of, not help out landlords, help out tenants, right? Provide them with some security, so they're not getting paid with exorbitant fees that they don't know about. You know, I am a landlord, right? I can effectively do what I want right now. And that's not a good thing. Obviously, I don't do anything for you, but, right? The city doesn't know that I'm renting, the city has no idea. You know, they passed, you know, with the Ido changes recently, they passed where you couldn't discriminate against people with vouchers or other issues. Well, how, how do you even enforce that without having some kind of sets of who's the landlord? And then also, you know, keep in mind that, you know, an individual who, who has one house of investment that they're using to build their own future, is very different from a corporation that owns three hundred units of their outright. We cannot all of them do the same thing. Loretta?
Well, I know that, that investors have come into our community to take people that have been living in these apartments for twenty years, and they're, they're charging outrageous prices, and they have to leave these places that they call home. So something needs to be done, and I would say that rent control is one of the issues of providing affordability. But if, if, if we're not going to be allowing that, or approving that as a, as a city council, we need to, the city needs to be aggressive in building affordable housing, so that these people are able to live in a place that is affordable for them. Otherwise, we're gonna see more homeless problems, and it's gonna be even more expensive for our community to deal with the homeless issue. So if rent control is one of the things that we can provide, I would say yes. I know that it was, one of my friends lived in San Francisco in a rent-controlled place, and otherwise she wouldn't be able to live in the city. So I think we need to consider it.
Moises?
Yes, I'm definitely in favor of rent control. One of the, one of the things that Matthew Desmond talks about in Poverty by America is how we can't just, we need to turn off the tap. So if we have people continually are falling into homelessness, it doesn't matter what we do on the other end of trying to help people who are on the streets now getting to housing, we're going to continue to have a housing crisis. Rents have gone up across the, across the entire west of the United States, more than other regions of our country. And it has gone up in cities regardless of the amount of housing stock, or, I mean, even in cities where they had a lot of rental units available. So the, the increase in rents is, is obviously been a situation of whether it be larger developers raising rents above what they needed to maintain. It's not that, it wasn't because there was inflation and all of a sudden for them to make repairs on apartments, they had to spend more money. It was just that they wanted to make more money off the rent than they, than they needed to make, they wanted to make a more handsome profit. And saying that the, the market can, you know, that it'll just bear what it can bear, is, is part of what's gotten us into this, into this situation. As I said, housing is, is not, and should not be a luxury, it should be a right for everyone. And so we need to control those escalating prices if we're going to, if we're going to address this issue.
Next question. What are your thoughts about and position on the eighty million dollar rail tail, rail trail project? Start with Loretta.
I just recently attended the meeting on it. We weren't invited to it, so I would say that we need to be provided public participation on it, since it's going through our neighborhood. And it's going on the west side of the rail, rail, railroad, but it's still in our area, and so I would say that we need to have more public process on it. I would like to see a design that is more about New Mexico, about Albuquerque, and the culture here. So I'd like to see those changes, and I recommend it in the meeting. And, and how, the question I had for them is, how do we benefit? How does the community benefit with the rail trail? So if we're gonna be spending that much money, how are we benefiting from it? And I'm saying this because when we go to other countries, I stated, we, we, when, I've been to Italy, I go to see the people there. I wanna know their culture, I wanna know everything about them. And so I would think that they would be designing this to encourage that. So I, I'd like to see that happening, but I provided all those recommendations to them also.
Moises?
I have to agree with Loretta, the, the invitation process to those meetings was a little bit odd, I don't know if any of you had similar experience, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't very clear. And there were invitations that were sent out, for example, to the Heaton Highland Neighborhood Association, I'm like president of, to our president, but it was almost like, we'll tell you at the last moment when it's going to be, it made it very difficult to actually be at the meeting. So I wasn't very happy with that. I like the idea of beautiful things for our city. I ride, I ride my bicycle, I live down there. The, but we have to be careful when we, when we do such projects. You know, one of the things that just popped in my head when Loretta was talking is, there, there's all this, this property that's owned, and a lot of it owned by, by a few people. But I wonder if the project couldn't have been leveraged in such a way to actually bring housing along the rail trail. I was on the planning commission when the first master plan was made for the rail yards, and it was beautiful. I don't know if you've ever seen the master plan, it was gonna be just, you know, there were gonna be like bridges to Barrelas, they looked like the Pankakee or in Italy. And of course, the money never showed up. So if we're going to spend eight million dollars, maybe we should have spent a few million dollars actually getting some housing tied to this project as well.
Bucking? So, and the short answer, I'm very supportive of this project. I mean, this is sort of quality of life projects that bring value to our communities, want to make our kids want to, A, enjoy it, but also want to stay or return back. And we do need public participation in these sort of things. I was at a meeting with Loretta recently, I, I did like there was more people of color there than, than usual demographic, which is not always the case. There was folks from Wells Park, there was folks from the downtown neighborhood association. I've been to several of those meetings over the years with the rail trail, friends of the rail trail. So we can always do better in getting the word out. And we also need to be proactive, a big part of these meetings. And so, that said, you know, we, we have a national...